I have six o'clock. Hopefully, we're ready to roll. Good to have everybody here at this work session for the Board of Commissioners of Franklin County on May 26th. It's six o'clock. Zooming in, I believe we have a few minutes to zoom in, which is good. So we'll start up in color's meeting order. Thanks again for joining. And we will start off with the invocation and the pledge, I believe, flag. Now, I'd like to, I hope y'all liked what you heard last time. We had two or three minutes of solid prayer. You know, we got something to pray about in America. We got the memorial day that we just celebrated yesterday. We got, we got the virus that we didn't get. And we got the opportunity here as commissioners to serve the county. All of that, we can pray about. So let's take about two minutes and say a silent prayer, and I'll bring us out of that. And then we will place the allegiance to the flag. Let us pray. In Jesus' name, amen. Thank you, commissioners. Now we will stand and salute the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag.
To the flag. I'm there.
To everybody.
For which stands one nation, God, indivisible, in whose justice we serve.
Amen. Discover something new there, but we did that. My my comporches was off track with each other and so forth, but nevertheless, we pledge allegiance to the flag. Thanks to Mr. Thomas for you interjecting and putting items for discussion tonight. As you see, hopefully, you've got that in front of you. We have the public works. Number one on the public works. We're going to look at the improvement projects that Chief was letting us do. I'm gonna ask Beth to give all of us update on that situation. Beth?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. If it continues to echo, please let me know, and I'll mute everybody to see if that helps. And we'll just have to remember to unmute ourselves as, as we go along. The first item that I wanted to discuss tonight is our water system improvement project line extension. We had an opening May 14th for installing water mains on Shackleford, the portion that has already been completed. Harlan Williams Keller Road and Williams Bridge Road. We had five different bids ranging from $571,000 to $803,000. The lowest bid is Arrowwood, who has done quite a bit of work for us on the water system. It's the staff recommendation to proceed with this lowest bid of $571,493.30. Arrowwood General Contracting. I will request that the Board of Commissioners consider approving this bid at Monday night's meeting.
Commissioner, do you have any questions that you'd like to ask Ms. Thomas about the water system improvement?
When do you think they'll start?
Um, well, as soon as you, I'm not sure exactly when they would start. What they've kind of been chaotic. But I can get the answer to the question, see what their timeline looks once we give them the approval to go ahead. We will have to hold certain meetings because this is GFO money. We will have to hold certain pre-construction meetings. So we will be, I don't want to say hindered, but that will have to work into our timeline.
Any other questions? That was a good question. Let's look at item number two about the lime injection into the sewer system and see if we make an in-her way with that, Ms. Thomas.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The sewer plant operation, both the treatment process and its, how do we say it, contents of the sewer plant, is all new to Franklin County. Since we opened, we have had continual adjustments as we learn how to treat it, both use the process and then treat what's coming in. And we have to do that to maintain what is in our permit as far as what the approved outputs are. One issue that we've continuously encountered is a pH imbalance. And a pH impacts so many other different components. It's imperative that we get this pH right. We have salt guidance from EPD. We have contacted other water systems. We use the same treatment process. So far, the most productive method is the use of lime slurry feed system. We had a company come in and test it. We had very positive results. We have worked with EPD to get an approved modification to our treatment system to include this lime slurry feed. And because it's such a very specialized service, there's only one company that provides this particular method included in an EPD bid summary. It will be $147,600 to install this entire system to feed into our super plant. It's our recommendation that we move forward. This would be paid for out of our sploshed five money that's allocated to water and utilities. Again, if we don't get our pH right, we won't be able to operate our sewer system adequately and be able to treat that. So while I hate bringing expenditure to a brand new treatment facility, the sewer business is, is one that continuously changes, and you have to learn how to, to treat that content. Monday night evening, I'll be asking the board to consider this sploshed expenditure to this lime slurry system. Anybody have any questions about that?
So we got the specialists and so forth that said sewer's business that thinks that will correct our situation?
Yes, sir. And we even had it tested. The company came out and said before they would install anything, we actually tested it over a series, over a period of time, and we had positive results in being able to maintain our pH.
Good. Any other questions?
Do we know what the operational costs are after the initial installation fee?
This particular system?
Yeah.
Yeah, it will just be the content they bring into it, the lime. But it does, because it's an automated system, you know, it's being built in as part of our treatment, it, it will cost us less than what we're trying to do now. We have lost a lot of nitrofirs. I can't remember how the guys say it, but we have tried multiple things and very expensive things to try to get this work. We think that while this is upfront, the cost that end will be better.
The backside's better, sir. That, that sounds good.
Any other questions for Ms. Thomas? So you're saying we'll deal with that Monday regularly?
Yes, sir. We'd like to go ahead and get that, get that started.
Okay. Thank you very much. Let's move into our insurance renewal. We had a pretty lengthy discussion the other night with department heads and so forth with senior citizens. Thanks. And supplemental insurance and so forth, understand we need to probably move forward with that. Hopefully, you guys have studied that issues and so forth. But let me, let Ms. Thomas tell us a little bit more. Ms. Thomas?
Yeah, I'm gonna split this insurance conversation into two according to the agenda. The first one we're gonna look at is the supplemental insurance. So the county provides medical, medical vision dental to our employees. We also provide a small portion of life, life insurance. But there are supplemental coverages that we offer to the employees at their cost, a short-term disability, long-term disability, a voluntary life insurance. For the three years, we have used Lincoln because we were locked into a three-year rate guarantee. Now, we're coming up with a three-year rate guarantee and our usage of short-term and long-term plans. Our employees were looking at a 25-plus percent increase on both of those lines of coverage. Now, the COVID-19 impacted a lot of items. Lincoln was going to allow us to renew it July based on our current rates, but then in February, they were gonna give us a seven-month reprieve, and then in February, we would face those rate increases. Again, 25%, that's extremely high, and that goes completely to the, to the employees' pay. So our broker had this quoted out, quoted the Lincoln renewal, six others, and then three companies, so nine in total, but three declined to quote. We've looked at everything. Standard insurance company provides us the best rates. They are comparable to what we currently, or our employees currently pay. We've also negotiated a three-year rate guarantee with Standard on these lines of coverages. I would ask for you guys to vote on our insurance coverages at the same time. However, because short-term life and long-term are all based on the demographics of the employee and their salaries, it's gonna be imperative that we get the information over to the insurance company as soon as possible, and we're not ready to make the decision yet. So I'm asking tonight if the Board of Commissioners would approve the change of supplemental insurance over to the standard insurance company, locking in at a three-year rate guarantee with them. And again, those coverages are short-term, long-term, voluntary life, and then a small portion of life insurance, AD&amp;D, independent life that's included in what we provide to employees.
Questions? Question, is that gonna affect our employees in any respect? Is forward to our money out of pocket by employees?
The answer to that is, is it's depending on the employees. It depends on their age bracket, so the employees that are gonna be jumping up an age bracket. It also depends on their salary, so anybody that may have been brought up. So the, the answer is yes, it's gonna impact their pocketbook, but that's based on their specific things. The rates per member or per level of insurance coverage is not. So I don't want to say it's not gonna impact them, but it's gonna be very specific to them.
Any other questions for Ms. Thomas?
Yeah, on the, the whole healthcare package that we're offering, are they offering some sort of discounts or incentives to be doing this life side of things? Reason I ask is, I mean, that's kind of one of my specialties, and I found that more often than not, it's cheaper for people to have their own plans than to be with a group situation. Also allows them to make some personal decisions. So some companies that I've worked with, they just credit the employees a certain amount of money if they want that insurance. It gives them a little bit of freedom. Also, with group plans, typically, they tick, 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 tick up. Whereas having your own plan, you can lock it in for 10, 20, or 30 years. As a benefit to the employees, they'll save more often than not several thousand dollars over the course of their lifetime, working lifetime. And I, I'm just throwing that out there as a question because a lot of times when you're dealing with group health and something that I provide as well, people don't talk about that. They don't, it's just one more thing they added on, and they kind of, you know, make it seem like it's a package deal where maybe it's separated, or maybe it would be cheaper for the employees or for whatever the entity is to get their own life insurance, disability, everything. At this point, it might be too late to even have that discussion, but I feel like I would be remiss if I didn't say something about that.
No, I think those are very, very valid points. Couple of things I did want to note is this is not tied into our medical. The, the portion of life that we cover for the employees is very minimal. We pay like $2 a month. So it's, credit to the employees will not benefit. I carry my own life insurance through another company. I do not use this supplemental life insurance. So our employees definitely have the option. This is not mandatory that they take it. It's only if they want it, and it's separate from their medical coverage. The small add-on that we do, like I said, is about $2, and I'm getting the exact amount because it's broken down into the life. Depending on what we do offer to them or we pay for them, it's a little bit more expensive, but we're, we're looking at the $2 to $3 a month range of cost. But I'll get you that information.
Can they pick and choose, or do they just have to take this whole package together? Or can they take bits and pieces of it?
They can take bits and pieces. Like last year, I tacked on long-term, and that's it. I never carry life insurance through us. Just, just personally, I found the benefit is to go outside. But for some people, they find it very beneficial to have these premiums taken directly out of their paycheck. That is benefit for, through the employer is, it's kind of seamless. We take it out of their paycheck and pay their premium on their behalf. But it's not all or nothing. It's, it's a, I can't remember what you call the, the plan, but you can, you can pick and choose.
That sounds good. Any other questions for Ms. Thomas? Here none, I assume you're ready to go ahead since we need to move forward according to this situation where we can have it in place and get started and get all the plans made for that. If there's no other question, I'm gonna ask for a motion that we go ahead and approve the motion that we go ahead with the supplemental insurance proposal that Ms. Beth pointed out to us. Do I have a motion?
I move that we change our supplemental insurance to standard according to what the county manager recommended.
Thank you. Dr. Max will make a motion that we go ahead and change it to standard according to what was recommended to us. Do I have a second?
I'll say it, Mr. Chairman.
Oh, we got a couple of seconds. Mr. Franklin waved at us, so we'll call you number two guy on the pole. Now, any questions about what we're fixing to do here? Here none, all in favor of the supplemental insurance proposals presented to us, raise your hand. I believe we got, any opposed, raise your hand. I think we got five who vote on that. Everybody voting to move forward, Ms. Thomas, so we'll give you permission to carry that forward. Next on our list is the medical insurance renewal, and we'll need an update on that renewal if you don't mind.
Yes, sir. Thank you. I just want to give you guys a status update. Some of this information has been sent to you. We did have a meeting with a few, not all, but a few department heads and officials last Friday to kind of discuss some of the options that we're facing. Based on our loss runs, you guys hear me talk about this every year, every year, it's, it's the same, it's the same message. We're running somewhere in a 110%, 120% loss ratio, which means the amount that we pay in premiums is far less than what we, what the insurance company pays out in claims. We have a total of 12 claims that have cost our plan about $685,000. So as usual, a small, small percentage is driving cost. One of the things that continuously impacts us is our pharmacy spend is somewhere around 38%. Average is about 19% to 20% for most plans of our pharmacy cost. Our specialty drugs make up about 65% of that pharmacy spend. So it's a very few amount of drugs that's causing this increase. But I say all that to lead into the renewal. When we looked at the renewal, we started out with an over 38% increase. At our current count of full-time employees with insurance coverage or a full-time position with insurance coverage would be almost $40,000 increase. That's a $571,000 increase. So when you start looking at your renewal options, you look, okay, we voted out, you know, who are the players in the game? And you have to remember, last year, we went through the full quote-out. There's five big insurance companies and a handful of regionals. Ed declined to quote us this year. Last year, Blue Crossfield Shield was competitive, but we knew that they were gonna go into negotiation, and I'm sure you guys remember from all the newspaper advertisements, the negotiations with Northeast Georgia was quite intense, and so we opted not to go with them. So when they look at us this year, they will base their quote completely on our lost claims for this year. So they know that we're a losing client, and they may not be as competitive. Humana is just outside of our area. United Healthcare already has our history. So it's not like we can play the negotiation game to say, oh, we're gonna be a good client. They know what our history is. But really, we're looking at Cigna, and I think Cigna provides the best continuation for our employees. And when we look at open enrollment, we're not switching entire carriers. But, you know, negotiation trends and pharmacy spend like we have is very difficult. At this point, we have managed to get them down to about a 16% increase with the possibility of down 14% through every card that we possibly could have at them on the renewals. We have one more option that's out there on the table, and it's called a local plus option. What that will do is slightly change the networks to where it would be specific providers, specific hospital groups that would be involved in this. Again, we had conversations with department heads. My goal is not to impact the employees and to minimize any type of impact on our, on our budget. With this local plus option on the table, we can get our cost increase down to 7.3%, which we estimate will be about $144,000 increase to our budget. We have on our HSA currently on the health savings account, we provide employees on our base plan $70 a month for them to put into their health savings account because we're on a high deductible plan. And obviously, high deductible means you have to pay all of that deductible before any type of insurance kicks in. For healthier people, they might not go to the doctor, but once twice a year, and that health savings account helps them in that process. So we look at some options to reduce that down to mitigate the impact on our budget. The reason why I don't have this prep for any type of vote tonight is there was some questions that came out of the department head meetings that we are running up to Cigna to confirm. We have ordered what's coming. I continue off the words on continuation. In essence, it checks everybody that we've had talked through against the network to see who falls out, who wouldn't recover what has to change. We want to get those answered before I make a presentation. However, I do feel like this is going to be our best options from a taxpayer and an employee basis. Zima, have any questions so far? I know that was a lot, a lot of math.
So it's shrinking the provider options essentially?
Yeah. Yeah, and if you look at a map, and I should send you guys these maps of Cigna, basically, a lot of these insurance companies are doing now is they're negotiating better contracts within a smaller field. Cigna is moving up towards Northeast Georgia. So our big players in the market will be Piedmont Healthcare, Northeast Georgia, Scottish Right. So for all of us that have youngsters that we typically take down there in emergency situations, Scottish Right and the children's hospitals are covered. We are going across preference on all the providers. There will be independent ones that do, that, that will not fall into this network.
That's a good question. Any other questions for Ms. Thomas? So Ms. Thomas, you gonna have something ready for us? Well, they regularly June 1st?
I'm very hopeful to have that. Again, I'd want to get those answers from the insurance company before we proceed. If it appears that, if it appears that a bulk of our providers are gonna be wiped out, and I don't think so, our, our number one claims as far as medical places we get to is Northeast Georgia. And volume of claims and, and in dollar amount of claims tends to be Northeast Georgia. And then I have the other rankings of other systems we use as well.
Does that include St. Mary's? I mean, locally, so, okay.
It is not. It is not, and that's the harsh one. I will look, we do use the second votes in terms of count of claims, but if you look at the details of the claims, it's the price range, and this is, this is my estimate because I can only get so much information. But looking at the costs, it appears to be lab services. I know what my ECHO costs every year, so it appears to be those types of services. There are only one or two costs that appears like it might be our charge.
How, how much are they penalized if they go out of network? Is it a huge increase?
It would be, well, you would, what you get is you might get the negotiated rates, but they would be an out-of-network provider. So what happens is the insurance company will pay at that contract rate, but then you have, they can, what's called a balance bill you. So if you get something that costs $10,000 and the contracted rate is $4,000, and the insurance company, you know, kicks in and pays that $4,000, then they can balance bill the rest of the $6,000. Whereas an in-network provider, there, there is no balance billing. In addition, the deductibles are considered separately. So you have an in-network deductible, and you have an out-of-network deductible, and there is definitely a cost differential. But the plans on this would stay the same as far as what the deductible that the employee will pay, the co-pays if they opt to, the premiums, again, if the county absorbs the 7% increase, the employees will not be impacted, their choices will be impacted. So you have two paths you can go. We can pass on the premiums increase to the employees and give them all the options that they want, you know, they're accustomed to at a higher premium cost, or you can keep pocketbooks the same and reduce the choice options.
Very good. Any other questions, gentlemen? Thanks for the work on that, Ms. Thomas. I know you put a lot of work into that and so forth, and our employees spending more than, than we're paying in, therefore, it's certainly, the insurance companies begin to look at us pretty strangely, but luckily, we able to put together something I think we live with.
Yeah. And then I, I do want to say this. I know this is a public meeting, Shane, MJ, everybody that's on here. Obviously, these decisions impact our employees, and this decision is not made yet. You know, this gets public, some may panic, some may have questions. Again, I work with the department heads unlike in prior years where I felt like we didn't have much of the option. This is a significant, and we tried to work with some key departments that host most of our employees. I just want to be cognizant of their emotions, their feelings on these, on this subject matter. And we look at publishing this ad. I would love it if we could, almost wait until we're finalized on this decision before we advertise this is what we're going to do, we're not going to do. I mean, it's, it's a big decision, a weight on us.
That's correct. Any other statements for Ms. Thomas? Let's move along. Go ahead, Skip.
I was just gonna say thank you for wading through those waters. I know how involved that is, and I'm sure a lot of man-hours went into having those discussions and narrowing those things down.
I cannot take credit for that. I usually don't have our broker here, but Turner Woods and Smith, they do a fantastic job, and they are five, they are 10 steps ahead of me the whole time. They've already done work and actually present this data to me, so I can't take credit for it. I appreciate you recognizing that, but I will give more credit to you.
Sounds good. It's always good to have professionals supervise it looking at a situation like this. Appreciate it. Let's move along to C, which is the Fly 2021 Budget Proposal. And I believe we probably could use an update other than what the information we already have, Ms. Thomas.
Yeah, and I do apologize to you guys. I know I listed it as the proposal, and I should have really just put an update on the agenda item. I, I was hopeful that we would get the sales tax distribution already. I looked at last month, and it was the last day of April, so they may hold it out until the last day of May this time. But this, the sales tax distribution this month will give us the first indication of what the COVID did to our sales tax base. We'll see the gas price impact of it, and then we'll see some of the sales tax, because what we get in May was March's point of sales. It won't be first of it, April will be the worst of it, but what we get in May represents what customers paid for in March. So we still don't have that information yet. Of course, the insurance decision will have one of the largest impacts on our employee costs and where we go with that. Right now, in my budget projections, I do not have any COLAs in there. However, I would like to leave on the table that should our economy bounce back better than expected or not be as big of an increase, that we keep that option out there. Even if we have to look at pushing it out to December or March, I, I don't want to take the COLAs completely off the table until we know what the sales tax implications are gonna be longer. We have a request, budget request from the Health Department who requested no increase in funding. Of course, their request came in prior to any of the state impact, so I have not heard an update. I'll reach out to them to see how the state's budget is going to impact them. We did have a request from the animal shelter, and I may ask Dr. Stone to come and meet with you guys so that she can explain those differences. I think her cost increase is justified based on their operating expenses, but of course, they made their presentation prior to the economic impact, and I think it will be important for her to speak to you guys. We do have our public defender contract in. That's something that Bubba works with a public defender every year. I have emailed that to you guys on Monday evening. I would ask that you consider approving that. Thankfully, this contract only. Thankfully, this contract only is only an increase of $521 annually. So there's not much change in this budget, but we do have to approve that agreement every year. So I would ask that the Board of Commissioners complete that. I do need to double check and make sure on our calendar, we had slated, or I had proposed June 18th as our public hearing. That public hearing must be done one week prior to the adoption and that that works out. Is everybody available on June 18th? It is not necessary that we have a quorum at a public hearing. But anytime you're dealing with budgets and money, I'm sure you don't want to be standing in a public hearing by yourself. So you at least want to have a few of you guys there. Is everybody on June 18th?
Our senior staff won't be able to judge this, so.
Yes, I would, you know, it would be very hard to conduct a public hearing with public comment via Zoom. I have a difficult enough time handling you guys and just our small group.
You're right. Any questions from Ms. Thomas on the 2021 budget and the public hearing that's coming up June 18th?
More than likely, I will not be able to make that public hearing on the 18th. I think we're leaving that evening to go out of town. I've got a cousin that's getting married. And I think we'll be leaving that Thursday evening.
I think I'll be there, but if, can we have it, you know, six, like the regular meeting? Not five, three? Okay.
Yeah, and if we need to do later, please let me know.
Anything else?
To be able to be there.
Yeah, I'll try and make it. Let's move to D item. As you see on your agenda, it's the 2020 Budget Modification Update, Ms. Thomas.
Yeah, I sent you guys by email a current listing. I think what I'll do, I just want you guys to be fully aware of what I'm going to ask for modifications. Most of these items you have already voted on throughout the year, but it's required that we have a budget resolution and the knee changes to the budget goes through that resolution process. There are a few that I want to hold out and I may ask you to vote on these modifications on June 30th. And the reason why is we continue to make drawdowns on our GFA loan and our wastewater treatment facility loan. And I would hate to make you ask for budget modifications this month just to turn around and ask for them again next month. Because what happens is the expenditure shows on our line items, but the revenue is not something that's necessarily tied into that resolution. But if, as you go through them, if you will let me know if you have any questions. Most of them are tied into grant money. Our LMIG normally it's a year lag, but this year we were able to complete both FY19 LMIG and FY20 LMIG in the same year. So I'm sure you guys have read around the county. We have all of that paving done in this first year. We have some equipment grants for the volunteer fire department. We received the money last year, but they made the expenditure this year. So we just need to true up that budget. Some of the additional expenditures that we were not prepared for is the increase in our legal services. We have done a very good job maintaining those expenditures down to a minimal level over the last four, five years. I've broken that down into the different categories. You know, the amount of time we've spent with GRP, the appeal process for the landfill, some elections, you know, when you can't help when somebody decides to contest and we have to provide legal services for that. So I'm asking for an increase. This is something that we need to consider for the following year. It tends to be, here recently, we have used legal services a lot more than what we've used in the past and we have to take a good, hard look at that. And then there's one other item I will mention in the manager's report that is also listed on this budget modification. But I presented them to you guys. Some of these will still change as I comb through more and more of the budgets. If I have anything else, I will keep a running list. If you have any questions, please let me know.
Anyone got any questions, Ms. Thomas? Let's move into a manager report. Ms. Thomas, you said you had some items you want to move into on that?
Yeah, and I promise we're going to get to a point where you're not just going to hear my voice. I've actually asked Scott to attend so he can give you an update. The first thing that I want to discuss with you is our technology. When we look at our budgets for next year, while we're cutting and we will be cutting or looking at holding steady on some expenditures, one area that we need to focus in on is our technology. I issued out a survey to all of our department heads and elected officials to give me some information on our technology. What are our current vendors that we use? What are some improvements in technology that we'd like to see over the next year? Some of our department heads have put in some really, really good stuff. Since we implemented our new financial server, I have not entered into any IT services contract for the BSC. Our vendor has done it on an ad hoc basis, just as we need him. Because several of our counties around him hacked with ransomware and different, it's going to become imperative that I have an IT person. And I'm not asking for staffing. I have asked for a contract about, it'd be about $2,000 a month, but that will cover eight of my departments. That will be a cost that's shared across eight different departments. My vendor will act as our IT person, maintain all of our backups. Anything that takes him less than half an hour will be, you know, part of that contract. I trust him completely. He is the one who rebuilt our entire servers. We have been running seamlessly. I'd say Gina Takear hit, so that is good. And you know, she can attest to how phenomenal he has been and he does a lot of the work. Jay Quick, with Quick Technologies, he does a lot of Stevens County, a lot of the city of Toccoa. And anyway, I want to enter in that contract and make sure that we are protected at all times. The other thing, on top of the Unicode codification process, I'm also looking at price quotes to update our website. CODIS has given me an estimate of about $10,000 capital investment with a $2,200 annually, but my goal would be to modify. About five years ago, five and a half years ago, we did a website update and there is not a day that goes by that I do not access that website. We've got all our forms on there, but I think we need to take it up a notch. And now we need to have form that can be submitted and it needs to be a little bit more user friendly. Gina has done a fantastic job of our website administrator. She puts it on there, but I think giving her something easier and more. I think she can attest. I think we need to step it up a notch. Five years is a long time in the world of technology and to make it look better. It's a technology. The next thing I want to talk about is the C and E agreement. Wanted to let you guys know I did get that paperwork signed. It has been executed by Metro Green. It has been executed by the chairman and has been sent back. I am holding a check for the $94,000 that was owed to us. The attorney's firm is keeping it escrow until they get the executed copy back and until our appeal is dropped and until we issue the business license. Once we have that, that $94,000 will be released to us. The next thing that I have. Okay, the next thing I have is going to be inspections program. You guys know that I worked on this for a little while. We had our first reading of it and then it kind of dropped. Mr. Swales, you worked on it just as long as I have, but going planning department or planning and zoning board onto us. We held our town halls, we did all of our due diligence, but you guys still had questions when we got down to the final part. I am so grateful for Scott for coming on board and he has really taken it. We said, okay, this is your first project that you do. He's really taken it and done all the research, worked with the planning department. So he is here tonight and y'all get a break from my voice to give you guys an update on where we stand on the inspections program.
Good morning, Ms. Thomas.
Appreciate it, Beth. Good evening, gentlemen. Like Beth said, we're looking at trying to implement building inspections and code enforcement programs for Frank County. And it's been going on for a while now, trying to get this thing up and rolling. I know the first way that we went through this, there was some concerns that were brought up. I feel like we have addressed those concerns and written those concerns into the updated ordinance, which I have actually, the planning commission will be voting on this ordinance on the June 11th, this upcoming planning commission meeting, to approve the ordinance as it's written and to approve the process, the documentation, you know, the way that the building permits will look, the structure, and then also the cost sharing program with Euroveritas. And I want to give you, I want to give y'all a heads up, let y'all know that this is what's in the pipeline. And then also kind of ask y'all how y'all want this to go because there's a couple of different routes we can go with it. It being an ordinance, we just have to have two readings of it if it is to be approved. So we have our June 11th planning commission meeting and once I get all the input from the planning commission, I'll have that, I'll have the updated final draft that I can send you all. Hopefully, that next day or that following Monday. And then June 30th, I think, is y'all's next work session. So I can send it to y'all and y'all could look at it, send me back questions or concerns you have with it. We could possibly get it worked out between the planning commission meeting and the next work session. Or we could just try to do the first reading of it and the July 6th board of I don't know which route y'all would like to take. Or, you know, there's a certain time that y'all want to have to look at it and review it. But I do ask, once I send the recommendation that the planning commission comes up with, as y'all do review it and y'all do, you know, by all means, send me any issues or concerns you have with it and I'll make sure to answer those questions. That way, we get into the meeting process, there can be a whole lot of issues with it. As Beth said, Beth put a lot of work in this before I got here. She had kind of gotten me up to date on what the concerns were and some of the issues were. I think that we have worked those out. I think that this is a, it's a needed program, especially with a lot of the impending growth that's coming to this area. Public safety, public health issue, I think that is something that we need to get in front of before it comes to us and we're trying to like catch up with it. So that's, that's kind of where we're at with it right now. I just want to make sure that y'all were updated and that y'all knew it was coming here very, very near future. And then ask if y'all had any questions or concerns with it for me.
Yeah, I wanted to ask something. Last year that, you know, we had that first reading, I think, back in April, maybe sometime in April. And the program that planning and zoning came up with was very good. I thought it was very detailed and it addressed all our concerns. But the overall amendment, I mean, I'm sorry, ordinance that we were going to approve was very broad in scope and really did not account for those. That program was more something that was developed under that ordinance. So what we were looking to approve was this really broad ordinance. So what I talked to Beth about was that we, when we passed that ordinance, that we concurrently passed some sort of resolution that puts that specific program into place. I think that's important because otherwise there are some broad powers granted by that ordinance and it's not really specified or, you know, laid out exactly how we must put it into practice. But I thought the actual plan was really good that, you know, we wound up with.
Right. And I can, I can attach as well the plan for the implementation of it and how we're going to get from not having the program to having the program. Is that kind of what you're looking for? Like the steps, how we're going to train the staff, how we're going to get in contact with the, with the the building community, make sure they're spun up?
Well, mainly it was, you know, that program, it laid out specific, specific components that are not really in the ordinance. And I'd have to go back and look at it now, it's been so long. But it laid out who, for instance, the types of exemptions for permits, for instance, certain ag buildings, what the scope of inspections were going to be and the process for how they were going to do citations. You know, no necessarily, no financial penalties. It was a citation, you corrected or you have a stop work order until it's corrected. Enforcement being with the county versus the citation coming from the, so those sorts of things.
Right, and those, like that there has been added to the ordinance.
Okay, I just needed to look at that, I guess.
Yeah, yeah. And once, once the, once the planning commission does their, does their review of it, I'll get that shot to y'all ASAP and then we can, we can work on any other issues, I think. And I think we're very close to beating where we need to be with this. And so, yeah, as soon as I get it, I'll make sure to send it to you.
Any other questions? Oh, Scott?
Before we, before we move on, sorry, we'll try to both get this straight. Is one of the things, and I guess Commissioner McAlister, when you look at code in the state law, you don't want to be so specific. You know, there's code, there's the official code, and then there's the regulatory agencies that take care of it, rules and regulations. So it seems more like we have an ordinance that details out, we're going to have an inspections program, this is what we're going to have, and then you have a, almost a policies and procedures or rules and regulations.
Right.
Out of coding everything into the actual code, you need to have some, a little bit more flexibility.
Right. That's what, remember I was talking to you about, maybe the actual, the main outlines of that program, maybe implementing that concurrently in a resolution. You know, pass the ordinance and have that little separate part. Because I think that otherwise people are going to see that very broad ordinance and say, well, what happened? Where's the actual program? And the program was good and I know how that works, but if we, if we secondary or right along with that, approve that specific program that, you know, everybody worked to come up with. And I know they've, you know, apparently worked and, you know, worked on it even more.
I just want to make sure that we're not trying to code.
No, no, I know, I know, but I just want to make sure we, we actually approve that, that specific program, you know, underneath that ordinance. But I guess we have to see, you know, what it, you know, how its final form looks.
We'll just put it in a policies and procedures type format.
Yeah.
Be the best thing. Because it's already there, I mean, the skeleton's there.
Yeah.
Just have to put the slurs language. Don't quote me on that, MJ. Slurs is not the right word. It's not the, not the right word I should use.
One thing I think we do need to consider, if it passes, is being very clear about the scope of it. With the people that I've had a conversation with, you know, you hear crazy things and there's a lot of rumors. And usually when I set the rumors straight, that most people are like, oh, well, okay, that makes sense. And the one that I hear most often is, I can't even put a shed in my backyard without someone inspector coming out there. And I think we need to be very clear about this is, this is residential or commercial level, not farms, not sheds. This is going to be affecting new home construction primarily so that we're protecting future home buyers and trying to build a quality product for people that move into our community, for people that are already living in our community. So I just, with all the other commissioners, just throwing it out there, we need to be very proactive about how we, you know, let people know exactly the details of it and so that is clear because there's so much confusion and some people have gone to those meetings, but not many people came to those meetings that we had. And that's actually kind of sad to me because that's, you know, it's a pretty big deal. But that being said, I think it's a great program. I did put a lot of time into it, as did Beth and some of the other planning and zoning people.
I agree, you know, the details are in that program. It answers a lot of those specific questions and that's separate. You know, obviously the ordinance is at a higher level and is broader. That's why I think it's important that we also approve that program so people know exactly how that ordinance is going to translate into practice and that not that we've approved this very broad ordinance that who, you know, from, coming from their standpoint, who knows what might be done with it at some point. You know, that we have a specific program in mind and we can show that to them. Because it was very good, I thought.
But that's well, well said, Commissioner. I agree with what you're saying there. Communication is going to be the key, Scott. When we communicate back and forth, we need to communicate with the planning and zoning folks and you and making sure we're all on the same page.
I agree, I agree completely.
Anything else concerning that from Scott?
No, sir, that's all I've got.
Thank you, sir. Any commissioners got anything? Thank you, appreciate it, Scott. Let's move. Let's move back to Ms. Thomas. Go ahead. You've got a couple of items.
Two more things. I'll try to make them quick. I sent you guys an analysis on the Gateway and Bestrip Park. As you know, we have an agreement with the the Joint Development Authority and how the add the law on taxes on property located inside that Gateway Park is handled. Looking at that agreement, it is silent amongst how do we distribute it amongst the counties? We received a true-up payment back in 15 and then one additional payment in 18. And I've just been holding that money in escrow in essence. We haven't spent the money. We don't budget for it. It's just sitting there. I went back and asked Hart County for a check register to see what they paid and then they provided a lot of detailed information as well. So I went back and calculated what it would look like if we were distributing amongst our individual taxing authorities here in Franklin County. That analysis given to you guys shows where we'd be for all the payments that were received thus far. There has not been any distribution for 19. So what this would be, it catches up. From that point forward, I would recommend that it just goes directly from the Hart County Tax Commissioner to our tax commissioner and allow him to distribute that. What I don't know and what I'll ask for is Bubba to verify if we want to move forward with the distribution. Since the agreement is silent, how do we formalize it? How do we put it to a resolution from this point forward that states how we will distribute it out? We will handle that money so it outlives any individual, one of us, and continues, continues on. It's my recommendation that you guys approve this distribution. We all pay from the same tax base. Our people are all the same, no matter what taxing authority it goes to. I say that we we pay it out to the school and the IBA appropriately to us all. If you guys approve that on Monday and then Bubba tells us how to c in it and how to formalize it going forward, I would like to have those checks by the end of the next week. If you guys have any questions about that analysis that I gave you, please let me know. There are some assumptions made in that calculation, but I feel like they are fair assumptions as far as the the miller grade that was utilized for it. Do you guys have any questions about that analysis?
I'm just curious, why, why would they not have already paid for 2019?
I I don't have the answer to that. I do know that they have a change in tax commissioner.
So we can, but we can reach out to them and say hello.
Yeah, but I would rather, I would rather not do it until we have how we're going to handle it. That way, if it hit me, we can skip me and we can give it straight to our tax commissioner and allow him to actually account for it in the system. Yeah, we'll ask for it.
I appreciate your work on that, Ms. Thomas. It looks good. Any other question, Ms. Thomas, on that question? You got anything else, Ms. Thomas?
I got one more thing. Just want to give you guys an update on the board appointments. I went back through the list today. We have had several applications put in and forward to you guys for open positions. We have some that are upcoming in June, one in November, and then the rest will be by the end of the year. So I wanted to run down those with you guys. We do have a JDA appointment open. We have two on the library board that will be coming up in June and November. I will reach out with, to Maggie at the library system and first let them know that my records show that this appointment is coming up. If her current board members are interested, to make sure that they are aware, put in those applications. Have one on the Family and Children's Services. I will put in a call to confirm that that is our appointment. We have somebody coming off on June of 20. That one's a very specialized board and it requires certain qualifications and we always work with that board and Bryant over there at DFAX to help us with that. We have the Airport Authority. That is due to positions. Our records show those appointments in April, but June 30th is what is up for us. We have two recreation appointments that should be coming up at the end of December. And Commissioner West, you may be able to provide an update. At one point, we were going to have a gentleman who was going to resign or they were going to, you know, for for non, non-appearance. But I never received anything. So his position will be up in December. I'm not sure if they're trying to escalate it at this time period.
Right, right now, I have not heard any more about it, trying to do anything early with that position. I'll reach out to them and see, but as of right now, I would say it would just probably roll on unless he turns his resignation in too.
Okay, so we got two that's coming off in December and then on the Planning Department, we have two that rolls off this December. So again, throughout the year, these things will be on our website and we will advertise in the newspaper. We've had some that put in for the Recreation Department when we thought that position was going to come up. So we need to pull those out and make sure that you guys are reviewing those for any open positions. And then I think the two, the the three most current boards will be Family and Children's Services and I'll wait for Bryant to to answer back on that. The Library Board, which will be Maggie, the JDA, I said three, there's four, JDA, and then the Airport Authority.
Only two airport appointees. I've had an opportunity to talk to four, three or four commissioners myself about Bubba's feedback on conflict of interest and so forth. And also looking at the GBI investigation. I think the commission is very interested in seeing the outcome of the GBI investigation. Plus study a little bit more about the conflict of interest. And I suggest we look at that again in June and see if, see when we tackle it. Any questions, gentlemen?
I'll make sure to get you guys a list of all the applications I have. But Gina, I'll ask for your help in that, to make sure that we're cross referencing and triple re, cross, triple referencing what lists we have. And then any applications that you guys don't have a copy of already, we will make sure to get it to you.
That sounds good. Commission, before we adjourn, does anybody have anything? Here are none. Do I have a motion? We adjourn.
I'll move that we adjourn.
Thank you. Commissioner McAlister makes a motion. We adjourn second.
I'll second.
Thank you, Commissioner Weston. All in favor? Thanks, everybody. Good job.
Good night.
We stand adjourned.